We'll call the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Tuesday, January 16th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers. Our invocation tonight will be from Councilwoman Lisa Parsons. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day and may bless what you've given us, Lord. We thank you for the safety that you've given us, Lord, to come tonight to this meeting. Lord, be with each one of us as we do about your business of our city, Lord, and that we look out for the future of each of our citizens. And, Lord, be with each of us as we go home to get their safety. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Phillips.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilwoman Smith?
Councilwoman Massingham?
Here.
Councilwoman DePew?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Here.
Mayor Cornman?
Here.
We have six persons.
Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none. Item six, citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none. Item seven, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
We received the consent agenda in our packet and make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. The City Council will consider bids received for a fire hose for the Papa Bluff Fire Department. Fire Chief Mike Moffett is here to present.
Good evening. This is the fire hose for the two new engines that we have coming in later this year. We do a lot of business with this Sentinel Emergency Solutions. They had the best bid by far and seeing reason not to go with them.
Make a motion, move this to the voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the City Council will consider an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 610, entitled Peddlers and Solicitors, Section 610 dot 160B, relative to the operating hours of mobile food vendors. Manager, winners?
Thank you, sir. So currently, our ordinance restricts the time in which mobile food trucks can be open. Currently, that time is that they're allowed to be open is 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. With the growth and popularity of mobile food trucks, we've been asked by a variety of those folks that operate those to possibly extend the hours specifically to earlier in the morning. The proposal is to change the hours that mobile food trucks can operate to 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM to accommodate those that are doing coffees and breakfasts and things like that.
Motion to move this to the voting session, held February 5th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the City Council will consider authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development Community Facilities Grant Program for funding to purchase patrol vehicles for the Papa Bluff Police Department. Manager, winners?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. So the requesting that we submit an application to the USDA Rural Development Community Facility Grant Program to purchase patrol vehicles for the police department. The request would be for 30% grant funding and 70% local match. The total project cost is $338,000 with a grant request of $101,462 and a local cash match that's paid out of our capital funds in the amount of $236,746. This would be for six new patrol vehicles for the police department awarded.
I make a motion to move this to the voting session, to be held February 5th? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the City Council will consider the addition of Chapter 516, entitled Vacant Commercial Buildings, to the Code of Ordinances. Manager, winners?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we currently have an ordinance requiring the registration of vacant residential structures that have building or housing code violations. I'm proposing that we mirror that same ordinance for vacant commercial buildings that have building code violations. The vacant residential ordinance has been successful since being enforced. Those funds that are collected from that process are used to tear down dilapidated houses and do other city community cleanup projects, just as the residential ordinance, this registration requirement and fee would only be triggered if the building also had a building code violation, not just that the building is vacant. The registration fee would be $500 every six months. Irene Morse, our planning clerk, keeps track of all those, along with our planning department, code enforcement, and building inspectors. So any questions?
Motion to move this to the voting session, held February 5th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the City Council will consider a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the Papa Bluff Professional Firefighters, IAAF Local 2543. Manager, winners?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the union contract with the Papa Bluff Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 2543, expired on December 31st, 2023. So this will be a new contract for them. There are some changes in this new contract that's being proposed. The first is that there was, they have agreed to no raises in 2024. However, in 2025, there would be a 5% raise plus a 25 cents an hour for every five years of service. Another change of note is that currently firefighters accrue sick time at a rate of 19.2 hours per month. The proposed contract would increase that to 24 hours per month. This would bring their sick time accrual rate to match the shifts that they work. Not sure where the 19.2 hours came from, but that, like I said, that would match the shifts that they're working. Currently, firefighters top out at 10...
Bless you, sir.
Currently, firefighters top out at 10 24-hour shifts of vacation after 20 years of service. The proposed contract would add the following. After 20 years and one day, they would receive 11 shifts. After 23 years and a day, they would receive 12 shifts. And after 25 years, they would receive 13 shifts of vacation. Another thing included in the contract to the city will provide a $15,000 life insurance policy. This is actually part of our group health plan is provided for all employees. The other part of that is if a firefighter dies in the line of duty, the city would cover their funeral expenses, which I would hope that if any of our employees passed as a result of that, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be something that we would have to have a discussion about. But also, there's a removal of the cap for accrual of comp time and eliminating the first two steps, first two steps in the salary schedule of firefighter, which would increase the starting pay from $12.81 an hour to $14.10 an hour. This is a proposed two-year contract that would expire December 31st, 2025. You know, one of the things that I want to kind of, hey, I'll wait to say that till later. If you have any questions of me, Chief Moffett is here, Josh Beulah, who's the president of the Firefighters Union is here. Any questions for any of us regarding that list of things or anything else in the contract that you have questions about?
I have a question on the, you said eliminate the first two steps. So they top out in a year or will you add two more steps?
I'm trying to remember how we did that. I was thinking about that while I was reading it. Please, Josh.
So, good evening, Council, Mayor. Thanks for letting us come in tonight. On the steps of that, of course, the first step, $12 an hour, that doesn't, anything that's kind of attract, you know, any kind of applicant. So we voted to kind of eliminate that. So we'd move it into... Is that here real quick? So the next pay step after you would start, so the starting pay would be 1410 and then after 12 months would be 1481. Used to, our pay scale was to whenever someone achieved qualification. So whenever they achieved firefighter one, that would be a pay bump at six months. Then they would bump up at 12 months whenever they achieve the next qualification. Now, being that it's a requirement that everyone has firefighter one and two when they're hired, that makes that up to bring it out to the 1410. The next pay raise would be at 12 months, which would be 1481. 24 months would be 1557 and then three years topped out would be 1613 an hour.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, we kind of did that same thing with the police officers, too. Eliminated that, at least the first step in the police officers to start them a little higher. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just had a question about the accrual cap. Is that normal across city lines that we don't cap that or what does that look like?
You know, police and fire are the only ones that can accrue comp time. And honestly, I do not remember what the police officers' comp time accrual is. But they're the only two departments that are allowed to accrue comp time. I can find that out for you and let you know though.
I was just curious why someone would want to continue to accrue over three weeks. Like what was the, I mean...
So on the cap that, for the comp time, I guess is the question. So the comp time doesn't really happen very often. If we have a callback or something like that, you can choose whether to take paid or to take comp time. Anymore, you know, a lot of guys that spend time more with their family, they may take comp time, but guys that may be starting out at a lower pay scale, they may take pay. So that's an option. Due with the cap is if we didn't exhaust that, we would lose that. So that's, everything is a time period that we have to exhaust it or we lose it, except for comp time. Of course, the comp time can't be taken, it has to be paid. So it's actually a benefit for the city is if it continues to roll financially versus them having to pay you if you have to use it.
Okay.
So.
I'd like to add, I've seen them do a good job today on a house fire.
Over in your neighborhood?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Up the street from it.
Yeah.
They got there and got it done.
It is cold weather and things.
Yeah.
Seems like they always have fires when it's zero degrees.
Even the chief showed up. Yeah. I was amazed.
I do, you know, one of the, what I was going to say earlier, I'd wait till, you know, one of the, I appreciate them understanding that, you know, working on the, on the pay and deferring their raise until next year. You know, and kind of one of the things that we discussed is what I would like to ask, ask, you know, the council, and this is not something I, you know, expect an answer for tonight, but one of the things that I would like to do is, and doesn't, you know, I think if we have a consensus about this going forward, that we don't necessarily need to, we don't need to do anything, but I would like to use, you know, the marijuana tax that's on the ballot in, in April is, is kind of, you know, what I'm thinking is that would be a good place for this to go is to pay for police and fire salaries. So that's kind of where I was thinking that raise would come from. So, and as we start promoting that, you know, I do, would like to, for it to go to them, so.
Well, while, while we're on that, do we have any estimated revenues from other cities, what we would be expecting per month?
You know, just looking at, at the reports that we get, you know, I expect a minimum of $300,000.
Per?
Based on what's open right now. And I don't, you know, that we do have the other one that's opening on the corner of Sunset and Westwood. Whether that's going to generate a whole lot of new business or whether that's just going to reduce business, that they're going to just kind of split what they're seeing now, I don't know. But just based on the last 12 months, you know, probably in the neighborhood of $300,000.
Like to make a motion to move this to the voting session, held February 5th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, action required. Items AA Bill Number 8526, the City Council will take action on an ordinance granting a waiver to Empire Comfort Systems relative to the installation of solar panels at their facility located at 2450 South 11th Street in Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
After talking to a few people the last couple of days from the council, it sounds like there's still some unanswered questions, a little confusion. If that's the case, I'd make a motion that we table this to the very next council meeting, February the 5th.
The 5th?
But I think that's, yeah.
I think that's correct.
I second it.
So are there some things, can I, what can I, can I do anything, provide you anything to help you feel more comfortable making a decision between now and then? Are there things that you need from me, things that you need from Empire, things that you need from Bach, Mr. Bach? Are there things that I can provide for you or do for you to help you?
Well, I know the question come up this weekend that, you know, we met with Empire, I think some of us did individually, and I think some people believe that they were only installing enough solar panels to take care of what they have. But there's another opinion that they're still installing twice as many solar panels of what they're going to use in electricity. And I don't know if that's for future development or, I don't know, that's one of the questions that came up, so.
He did bring up in the meeting that I was in that they do hope to expand their operation here and that this, you know, this waiver would be for the current and the expansion.
Okay. So they wouldn't come back and install another?
No, that was my first question.
Another 300,000 kilowatts or whatever it is for the future?
This would be for the whole project. That was my understanding in our meeting, so.
Okay. Well, that's kind of what I thought, too.
Instead of issuing a waiver, couldn't we go back and reformat our policy to what we wanted to say so that we can offer it to everybody and not have one special client out there that's going to get shoved down our throat every time we turn around, somebody else goes to do somewhere?
Well, I think each case would be individually based. So this would be an exemption to the ordinance now, if I'm, if I'm correct, right, on that?
It is. That's kind of, you know, what the, you know, there are different types of economic development incentives that, that we see a lot of, you know, when a manufacturer comes to town, whether they're local or state. And, you know, that's kind of, how I kind of viewed this is, you know, would be more of an economic development incentive to offer to, that would be individually based on, you know, what they're committing to, what they're, what, you know, what, how many jobs they've got, you know, different criteria, things like that, that would...
And I think that they actually purchased the solar equipment before we put into play our new ordinance, so almost more of a grandfathering them with this waiver than anything. It's kind of how I seen it. So if I misspoke on that, but that's kind of how I understood that they actually started this process before we enacted the ordinance.
But if we set one precedence, you know, precedence takes a lot in a court, really. You can answer that question. You know, if you set one precedence, a lot of times it has to follow on through.
Unless, unless you have reasons behind it, if you have reasons behind why you made the decision you made, you're just not arbitrarily making a decision.
Is this just a roll call vote for the table?
I think Steve wants to, to like to add something.
Yeah, if I can.
Yeah, come on up.
Steve Halter, 6110 Greenbrier Drive, Papa Bluff. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the council for giving me the chance. I would just ask that, that you guys not table this and go, and go to the next, I mean, we, this thing's been going on for quite some time and I know you guys have spent a lot of the time on it. We make exceptions all the time. There's a scoring sheet now that, that Matt and I worked together. I don't know, Matt, if you're using that or not. We've done it in the past for, we've given utility incentives in the past for companies. It wasn't something that we just, we just did it for everyone. We did it based on specific criteria, how many jobs, what they've done, what they've done for the community already, what their investment's been financially, what their investment's been with the number of jobs. I think this is the right thing to do to move forward. We've got a company who is, who's done everything they said they were going to do and have, they have plans for real growth in the future. They've already taken two companies from outside of this area and brought them to this area, along with the company they promised to bring here. So I would just ask that we just move forward with this. That's just my two cents worth. And we do see different, like Matt said, we see different state, federal, and local economic development incentives all the time, whether it's through utilities, whether it's through tax abatements, whether it's through tax credits, through customized training, all those things. And a lot of it's based on capital investment and job growth. Just my two cents worth.
Appreciate it, Steve.
Thank you.
Well, I can withdraw my motion if everybody feels comfortable voting on it. I said I could withdraw my motion if everybody feels comfortable voting tonight, but there's already been a second made.
We have, we have a motion and a second currently.
So I assume we have to go ahead and vote.
So roll call?
Second needs to be withdrawn if, before the motion.
I don't know what we're giving them. You know, I don't know what...
Can we just do a roll call of this?
The rates are and what, how we're going to break out in it.
Well, since we have a motion and a second on the floor, let's take the roll call vote.
And can I clarify, a yes would be to table it, a no would be to not. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Right. Councilwoman Parsons?
Okay, I'm clarifying again, I'm sorry, I couldn't...
Yes is to table, no is to not table.
And I believe the motion was to table it to a day certain, being February 5th. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
It would be tabled to the next meeting or not, depending on your...
Well, I do have clarification I want to talk to. I'm sorry, his name leaves me. What is his name? Who we met with?
Mike Loggus, the CFO.
I do have a question because I, something that I talked to someone else about differs totally what he said in the meeting. To me, that I made my decision. So I would, I do have a question for him. So I want to say yes, table till February 5th. We're only talking two and a half weeks. I'm sorry. I mean, and he, he at that meeting said it was no rush. I mean, it's, there's ice on the roof right now, so it's not like it's, I'm sorry.
Is that a yes?
Yes, to table till February 5th. Is yes the right vote?
If you want to table.
If that's what you want to do, table till the 5th. Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
No.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
The motion passes to table the item to February 5th.
All right, Bill Number 8526 has been tabled. BB Bill Number 8527, the City Council will take action on ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Papa Bluff and the Greater Papa Bluff Area Chamber of Commerce relative to the downtown Papa Bluff, Inc. Executive Director.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8527?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Papa Bluff and the Papa Bluff Chamber of Commerce relative to the supervision and management of the downtown Papa Bluff, Inc. Executive Director.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8527?
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Papa Bluff and the Papa Bluff Chamber of Commerce relative to the supervision and management of the downtown Papa Bluff, Inc. Executive Director.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8527?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phillips.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill Number 8527 has been adopted. CC Bill Number 8528, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number One to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's State Block Grant Agreement for Project Number 19-075A-1 for the master plan and airport layout plan update for the Papa Bluff Regional Business Airport.
Make a motion for first reading of Bill Number 8528.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to an agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to Project Number 19075A1 for the master plan and airport layout plan project.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8528?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to Project Number 19075A1 for the master plan and airport layout plan update project.
Make a motion for adoption.
Go ahead.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phillips.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill Number 8528 has been adopted. Item 10, our city manager report. Mr. Winners?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to, of course, I'm sure, express our gratitude to the Police, Fire, Street, and Utilities Department for their work in the last couple of days. You know, the, the weather's been treacherous, the streets have been treacherous, you know, the guys are out there, I think, you know, had a fire this afternoon. I just saw they had another call. It's probably just an alarm call on Sunset, but I think it's one of their frequent flyers. But, you know, those guys are out there in the, in the weather, in the elements, you know, clearing up our streets, patrolling our streets, spotting fires, keeping our utilities turned on. And I was out for a while today, it's cold, so I appreciate the work. And I rode around with Jerry Lawson for a while yesterday and checking on all the work they were doing, you know, they've, for what they've got, they're doing a good job with it. They're definitely keeping them busy and keeping, trying to keep the streets clean and everything else they're doing. So I appreciate those guys and all the work that they do. It's kind of neat tonight, Missouri Highlands Healthcare sponsoring the Winter Wonderland and having the ice skating rink in the Coliseum. I know they had a little disruption yesterday and not everybody that was signed up and had tickets for last night got to participate, but I'm not even sure how long it lasts, today and tomorrow, I think, maybe. But it's kind of neat. I appreciate them bringing that to our community at no charge to our residents for the ones that got tickets. It's kind of a neat event. And then lastly, you know, I want to express my gratitude to the Bread Shed and Family Counseling Center and the volunteers and for the overnight warming center that the Bread Sheds opened at Mayor... Bread Shed's opened, that Mayor Pro Tim Fox has been involved. If you'd like to say anything else, I'm sure I left some folks out, too, so.
I know, Bread Shed, of course, FCC, as you mentioned, Christway Ministries, Haven House has been a key player in it. Lots of community members, financial donations are definitely still needed. Their utility bill at Bread Shed is going to be astronomical this month by doing this. It's something they didn't have to do, but did it. And so, looking for volunteers, I know 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. is not a very fun shift, but right now, we have two workers from FCC every night through Saturday evening or Sunday evening, but if we have another cold spout, you know, we're going to need additional resources. SMTS has been a great help. Matt and the Coliseum have been great partners. I mean, it really has taken everybody and so, but the Bread Shed, you know, opening their doors and letting us in has been, you know, they're a huge part of our community and already do so much. I know, you know, Lisa does a lot with them, too, so.
And they're providing, aren't they providing breakfast?
We're providing dinner, breakfast, yeah, I mean...
I believe, was there an independent restaurant, maybe, that provided?
Gins Diner provided breakfast pretty much for the whole week. They provided so much food. We've had Mount Cavalry provided, Haven House provided a meal, Munch and Pump is providing a meal. I mean, I think we're good on food. We have so much food, we don't know what to do with it, to be honest. But yeah, if you, if you want someplace to help, you know, a nonprofit in the community, Bread Shed is somewhere to look at and see what they offer. So just a huge shout out to them.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, there's no further business to come before the council. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
We go do anything as individuals for Robert or as a group?